Hilton Hotel located at the northeast corner of Southdale. This, so the sketch plan where this is where the planning commission is asked to provide informal, non-binding comments to the applicant before they make a formal application. So they would, they'll make their presentation here this evening, get, receive your comments. This will go to the city council at their meeting next Wednesday. Again, same process, provide the details of the plan, get their comments, and then they would come back with a formal submittal. So this project is a little different from our typical sketch plans that we see. Usually with a sketch plan, there's a rezoning that's requested, or a comprehensive plan amendment, where they're really asking for something significant from the city. In this case, the use is permitted, the zoning is appropriate, we don't need to amend the comprehensive plan. This is just a, I say just, it is a sketch plan review and there are variances associated with it. As with all of our development projects recently, we've been sharing the, the working principles of the Greater Southdale Area Work Group. Those principles have been shared with the applicant. So we can use them in this case, but they have to be tied to the variance criteria. So we don't have quite as much discretion to say yes or no as we would with a rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment. So with that, to provide some of the detail, so again, this is located at the northeast corner of the Southdale site itself. Here's a graphic of what the site looks like today. Vacant parking lot. It's used for overflow parking for some of the busy shopping days of the year. They've stored equipment, no storage in that area, but it's, as shown in the picture, very seldom used. So what they're proposing is a four-story Hilton Hotel. When they first approached the city, they did take a look at locating the hotel on the northeast corner. This is an extended stay type of operation associated with the hospital. So I, it's gonna, there's gonna be some relationship with the hospitals for extended stay for those that are having surgeries. So providing that shorter walking distance was seen as a little better alternative. However, there's some view shed easements that, that go with the Macy's site. So in locating a hotel on that corner, it would block that view shed. So that's caused the hotel to shift over to this east corner. They will be providing shuttle services, things of that nature, to provide that connection. And as we'll look at in a minute, they are providing a series of pedestrian connections around the site. So some of the details of the site plan. So the hotel would be located along 66th and York. The parking field in back, about 147, 148 surface parking stalls that would face Southdale. There would be no additional curb cuts off of 66th or York. Access would be taken from the internal ring road. They would convert that one way back to a two-way in that location. There's also an access point right here, adjacent to the Firestone and Schlotzky's over there to the west. I mentioned pedestrian connections. That's one of the, the principles that we talk about with the Greater Southdale Area Study. So the areas that are highlighted in red, that's the new pedestrian sidewalks that they would be providing. So as you can see, the boulevard-style sidewalk would be located along the street here that would connect up to the sidewalk that was constructed as part of the One Southdale Place. And again, on the backside of the building, there would be a connection for the hotel guests to get to Southdale in this location here. They would add this green space strip to enhance that pedestrian walk, again, from the hotel to Southdale. In regard to setbacks, so these are some of the variances that are requested. They'd be requesting building setback anywhere from, oh, 10 to 15 feet from the property line. That's this dashed line that runs through here. So there would be variances requested to pull the building up to the street. As we've talked about with the Southdale Work Group, trying to provide that additional green space from the street to the building, and we've talked about a 50-foot setback from the curb. In this case, there would be about a 30 to 40-foot separation from the paved surface of the road to the building. So about 30 to 40 feet in this case. Actual building setbacks would be 10 to 15 feet, and variances requested. Another variance that's requested is in regard to the overall parking for the Southdale site. Believe it or not, Southdale's actually short-parked when you compare our code regulations to all the square footage that's there. As we've done with projects, the One Southdale Place, a variance was granted for the overall parking of that site. So that would be required here as, as well. A parking study is underway, and a traffic study as well, to determine impacts of the adjacent roadways. WSB is doing that study. So that would be provided for the commission for background with a formal application. So I'll just quickly talk about the, the building itself, and I'll let the, the applicant go into detail about the building. So the rendering that you're seeing here, this faces the street, and as you know, the commission is, we've always struggled with when buildings are pulled up to the street, engaging the street and providing these openings. This project is probably the best one we've seen. As you can see, the main entrance here, the grand entrance, faces the intersection with all of this glass work here and the glass at the street level. And again, I'll let them go into more detail, but it is a, one of the better examples that we've seen recently. So this is the side that would face Southdale. This would be that entrance into the back parking lot. There would be about, let's see, this graphic shows that there would be an increase in green space of about 16,000 square feet, as you saw, the grayscape that's out there today. So there would be quite an improvement in regard to landscaping and green space. So again, this request would require a site plan review, setback, and parking space variances. Would require watershed district approval and the full staff review at that time. So with that, I can stop and answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Any questions for Planner Teague?
I have a quick one.
Commissioner Wilson?
So is this an existing lot, or does it have to be, you know, subdivided, or is it a, is there any plating involved?
It is an existing lot. As you can, Southdale is made up of about, there's about eight different lots. So I haven't heard specifically if they're gonna create a new lot, or are they gonna shift some lot lines around to create that new lot. It's an example, the One Southdale Place, they did some shifting of the lot lines in order to create that lot down in the southeast corner. So that's a detail that they would have to decide what they want to do.
Okay, so that's administrative approval to do the, to shift the lot lines?
To shift the lot lines, it would. If they're gonna create a whole new lot and replat it, that, that would be part of the development review when they make a formal application.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Nemiroff.
Carrie, could you, I think it's your slide number seven. Could you pull that? I think it was number seven.
I don't have them numbered, I'm not sure which.
Bottom right corner, this one has a.
Okay, there it is. There is a number there.
So as I understand it, regarding the setback, you know, two, two concept, two conceptual options have been discussed. One is, as proposed and shown in this picture, about 10 to 15 feet, and the second one would be to follow this code, which is about 50 feet, in which case, parking lot may go between the sidewalk and the building. Is there any kind of study or feeling in, in your industry about which of those is more comfortable for walkers on a sidewalk? Whether it's more comfortable, or more, you know, more conducive, whatever the right word is, to walk near a building or near a parking lot?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of any study. There, there may be some out there. But it just seems, when thinking of, you're walking at 50th and France, and you even have the sidewalks that are adjacent to the street, those feel a little more comfortable with the buildings right there, as opposed to walking along France, where there might even be a boulevard-style with grass separating the, the traffic from the pedestrian with the, with a large parking lot right there. That, the 50th and France area feels more comfortable. So I, it would seem to me pulling the buildings up to the street would be a more comfortable walking path compared to having cars on both sides, whether it's a parking lot and a road.
Commissioner Forrest.
One of the illustrations, mention changing the one-way, kind of Southdale Service Road to two-way, would that be just in that one section?
I believe so. I'm not sure exactly how it all works out there, but that would be part of the traffic study. They're nodding, it sounds like that is the one section.
And didn't we have, there was some discussion at one time about some burming around the One Southdale Place, and, and so, I'm, I'm not sure that's, if there's room for it, for the one thing, but even the appropriateness of it, but whatever can be done to kind of soften, as you were saying, the pedestrian experience a little bit. And I'm wondering, the other thing is, the same intersection was one, was the one that we talked about previously, about the difficulty in crossing, like, over to Best Buy. So I think that's something that we should explore carefully, and maybe come up with some creative ideas while they're going, coming up with stuff with the, the building itself.
Yeah, and I, I didn't mention that in, in my presentation in regard to this right-turn lane. As you recall, with some of the other projects that we've looked at, at this intersection, we've explored a bunch of different options with the county, and would they be willing to eliminate these, these free rights? You know, we talked about doing a, potentially a roundabout here. Seems to be less and less going toward that roundabout. But the county is agreeable to eliminate the right-turn lane, and they have agreed to eliminate the right-turn lane here for this project, the gateway point. So we will be pursuing that. With this right-turn lane, they've said no, they're not willing to. They need to, to maintain that. So it's really gonna be about how to safely get pedestrians into this island, and then across this way, and to the north, for that matter. But this is the existing configuration that we're gonna have to work with.
The island situation makes it difficult to cross over by the hospital and the medical building on France as well, because the visibility of the pedestrian to the driver is somewhat limited. So yeah, I guess when they come back, it'd be nice to have some suggestions.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. We, you've got the 66 West project that's going in just to the north here. So there's gonna be more pedestrians coming across 66th to get to the, the transit area that's located down here. So this crossing of 66th somewhere in this area is gonna be important in the near future here. So that, that might be something that we explore as part of this as well.
Anything else? Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, could you explain a little bit about how this site currently manages the stormwater runoff? And then, in the report, there was a, you've mentioned that underground storage would be recommended, and how does that work, and why, why are you making that recommendation, or prefer that?
Yeah, we haven't done the deep dive yet. Where I was getting to was this stormwater pond that's proposed right here. We just typically don't see those kind of things along the street. Not saying it's a bad or good thing, just something that I wanted to bring to people's attention. Is that something that we want to have along the street? You know, we talked about that with the Bank of America project, where they had that little stormwater pond right on, right out on the street. So I just wanted to raise the issue at this point.
Anything else?
Currently, how is, how does that site drain right now? Where is the stormwater? How is it treated, and where does it go?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not familiar with how it operates today. Maybe the development team has a, a better handle of that.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Carrie. So if the applicant wants to come forth now and give us a presentation, or what, whatever you want to talk about. If you would, you know, give us your name and address, and, and if you have something on the screen, that's, looks like you have something on the screen, is that right?
Okay. Can you hear me? Oh, you did? Okay. I had to do something. My name's Kevin Grass, and I'm with Noble Investment Group out of Atlanta, Georgia. Do you want my home address?
Whatever you want to give us.
1129 Hampton Hall Drive, Brookhaven, Georgia, 30319. Okay. Well, thank you for coming out tonight and listening to our proposed, to learn about our proposed project. I'm gonna tell you very quickly who Noble is. I'm sure, probably, probably most of you don't know who we are, but Noble Investment Group is, it's a private company, and we were founded in 1993 in Atlanta, and we specialize, well, alls we do is hotels. It's the only thing we do, and that's all we've done since 93. We've invested over $3 billion into hotels in the United States since our inception. So we primarily go with the name-brand hotels that you recognize, Marriott, Hyatt, Hilton, Starwood, and Intercontinental. And we, you take care of that for me? Okay, thank you. And we just closed on our third discretionary fund. So we raised money through institutional investors in our latest fund, which we closed this past summer, is $233 million. And so that's how we're to fund this project. We, are some of our recent projects that we can talk about, a Hyatt Place in Columbia, South Carolina, which just opened in 2015, a Hyatt Place in Boulder, Colorado, which was 2015, Spring Hill Suites in Houston, an AC Hotel by Marriott in Atlanta, which is scheduled to open this, late this spring, a state view at North Carolina State University, and a dual-branded State Bridge Suites and even Hotels in Seattle. So we, we cover the US coast to coast, and we, you can see that we deal with several different brands at one time. So we, we like to pick the right brand for the location. We have, we have relationships with all of the brands, and so we don't try to put the wrong brand in the wrong, in the, any location, try to put the right brand in the right location. Okay? Also, all of our ground-up projects that we've done are LEED certified. So we, we plan on making this project a LEED certified project. We, we don't necessarily go for platinum, but we will be certified, okay? At some level. Since 2011, you can kind of see, this graphic tells you where we've done our projects. We own a Hyatt Place in Eden Prairie, which is the closest hotel that we own to here, to Madonna. This is also a joint venture between Simon and Noble. This is our, one of three joint ventures that we are working with Simon on. We have one project that I mentioned in Atlanta that is a FIPS, a Hotel at FIPS Plaza, and that is, is well underway. It's under construction, it's gonna open this spring. The other one is a, a property in Livingston, New Jersey, Adam Mall, in a corner, a lot of them all, these are all mall properties, where we are taking parking that is underutilized and placing a hotel on, on the mall property. I'd also like to talk to you about why we chose Homewood Suites. It is an all-suites hotel, and it, we feel like it's the right, it's, it's, the demand for an all-suites property is, is the right type of property for this location. We also chose Homewood Suites because of their, the ability to customize. The Homewood Suites, while there are some prototypical elements, Homewood of a lot, unlike a lot of brands, gives us a latitude to choose what we would like the hotel to look like, inside and out. We have prototypical rooms, so the, the layout of a room and the shape of the actual guest room types are fairly consistent. We do follow the prototype as far as what the inside of the room, how it's dimensioned, and what goes where, but what it looks like and what the finishes are, are really up to us. So our interior designer will come up with whatever design the interior designer thinks is appropriate, and present it to us, and, and we'll move on. And on the outside, our architect has designed an outside of the building, an exterior of the building, that we think fits the local architecture, and, and will fit in and be a smart choice for the exterior of the building. On the slide, no, go back up. Just to give you an example, here's a Homewood that is in Phoenix, so it is clay-tile roof, and it is stucco on the outside. This was actually a conversion for us, but it gives you an example of an extreme that, that Homewood would allow. Let's go to the next one. This is not a Homewood, but this is another custom exterior that we designed recently. This is the FIPS Plaza project, and then the next one is, a difference is that this is the, this is the Residence Inn. It's also a Simon project for us, and Residence Inn has a little less latitude about what you can look like, and so it's more prototypical when you're doing a Residence Inn, most of the time. Here's another project we developed, Callaway Gardens in Georgia. It's obviously a custom exterior, just an idea of, of, of the types of custom exteriors that we're used to developing. Here's an example of another Homewood Suites, which is in a custom exterior. It's not prototypical, obviously. And then, I'm gonna turn my presentation over to Gary Tucci, who's our architect, and he's gonna talk more about what we're presenting and proposing to develop here at Southdale.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commission members, Gary Tucci with Tucci Montgomery Architects, 7645 Lyndale Avenue South in Richfield. Carrie did a great job going over the, the site plan, so I'm not gonna dwell on it a lot, but I do want to point out a couple of things. As you know, we're showing a connection here, a new connection to the, to the mall, which we want to create a sidewalk with a boulevard, a grass boulevard to the street. So there's gonna be some coordination that has to be done with our civil engineer and Metro Bus to make sure that that works for them. But it was mentioned earlier that we are going to be changing the circulation here. Right now, it's, it's one-way, and so there's two right-hand turn lanes that turn right into that, into that one-way. We're gonna convert this area in here to two-way traffic. So we can act, we actually have some leeway to eliminate maybe one of those lanes, or just have the, a left-turn lane and a right-turn lane. In addition, I just wanted to mention a couple of things related to the, to the site plan. You had a little bit of discussion as to whether, you know, what the feeling would be with a building close to the, closer to the property line, or whether it would be a more comfortable walk next to traffic. I think one of the things that makes 50th and France, and that was a good example, Carrie, a pleasant walk is the, is the interaction and the engagement with the, the surrounding buildings. That's what makes it exciting. That's what engages a pedestrian versus someone that's just trying to get from point A to point B in the, in the quickest fashion. So what we've done is we've located those parts of the building that are engaged with the, the sidewalk, the, the, the main lodge area, which is really our living room. It's a two-story, really grand space, where you can see through the building all the way to the entrance, from the entrance in the back to the entrance in the front. And we've enhanced that by doing a glass storefront system in that two-story space to, again, engage the public realm. In addition to that, we've connected all of the exits out of the building from the exercise room here, this is the exercise room, the pool room, going out onto the outdoor plazas, and then the exits in the building as well. We also have the meeting room space, which is a more public space in the building. And then we have these individual patio spaces off the rooms on, on the first floor, again, to engage that, that public realm, so that we, we have more of an interaction with it, which makes it feel like a more comfortable space. That's creating that urban edge, which I think is important on this corner of the site, which is really a gateway corner to, to Southdale. This just shows the, the second-level plan. It shows that two-story space here for the, for the lodge, and the third and fourth level. So what we've tried to create here is a, is a building that's, a soft contemporary building. It, as Kevin mentioned, it's not really a prototypical building. It is in its room configuration, but not in the exterior or the interior design of the building. And we wanted to do something that was complementary to the new apartment building, One Southdale Place, and also the new, new north entrance to the, to the mall. So something that complemented both of those pieces of architecture, and provided some lasting design for the, the future as well. You can see the, the sidewalk and how we've tried to introduce both pedestrian-friendly landscaping that is a little more conducive to that walk, and then a canopy of trees as well that goes all the way around the sidewalk. We are continuing that all the way to the west property line, so if there is that connection across 66th Street, we'll have an opportunity there to connect to that as well. And this is the view along 66th Street, and then from the parking lot into the, the proposed parking lot into the, the front entrance, which is, which is right here. And then a, more of a close-up of, of that. And then we've used contemporary materials too, with the metal panels, the limestone on the exterior, and the stucco, which we think, along with the, the flat roofs, will be a lasting design that will complement the entire site. With that, we'll stand for any questions.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Tucci? Commissioner Nemiroff?
I have a couple of questions. One is.
Questions, comments, I should say.
What kind of food service will the hotel have, within the hotel?
They have a breakfast service. The rooms have individual kitchens, so they can obviously make their own meals, but they have a complimentary breakfast service, and then they also have manager's hour in the, in the evening. So there's hors d'oeuvres and drinks and that sort of thing, so that guests can, can meet in the lodge and get to know each other. It's a great, it's a great brand, and it's really, it really reinforces that connection both inside the building and out, outside the building, for interaction.
And then I had a follow-up question I should have asked before about the sidewalk. And I'm sorry if I missed it. How wide are the sidewalks in terms of, are they, are they 10 feet, or 8 feet, or long?
I think the existing are 8. They vary.
Yeah, it does. It varies, 8 to 10 feet.
Because, because one thing I'm wondering, and I don't have, don't know if I have an opinion, I mean, whatever we have there now is probably fine. I'm just wondering if, if we should start widening the sidewalks there, because I'm seeing as we become a more pedestrian and other kinds of transportation community, I'm wondering, particularly there, if we should expect bikes to be on the sidewalks. In other parts, in other parts of the city, we can see bikes on the road and sidewalks for pedestrians along, but I'm wondering if we should contemplate, particularly if you can start getting nice things over in that area, more bikes needing to share the sidewalk.
Any other comments?
Just, Chair, I'm, all-vehicle access, I mean, is coming in what would be the interior? I mean, so, so on that outside sweep along, there would be no traffic drop-off or?
No.
Any bus connection? I mean, is that, how is?
Only to the interior parking lot.
Okay.
Commissioner Hoffs?
Could you pull up the, the slide that has the site plan? And I, I'm gonna guess, Carrie, and you've had some discussion about what we've been working on as to the Southdale Work Group, and kind of the, the principles that we're looking at. And certainly, one of the, the issues that we've discussed, especially in this area, is to, for those pedestrians to not be right next to the traffic. And so I guess I'm wondering, with your site plan, is there the possibility of having more of a green space, more of a buffer on the traffic side of the sidewalk? And I don't know if that means moving the building back And I don't know if that means moving the building back a little bit to the southwest and just how possible that is with your site design.
You know, I think it's, you know, part of your guiding principles is to move the buildings to the property line for this, for the small area plan. And I think that's appropriate, particularly if you want to have a more urban feel to the center over time, and that obviously is not going to happen right away, but you've got to start sometime. And we think this is a good solution. I think that the way that the existing, you know, we're not modifying the existing sidewalk. What we're doing is we're building up to it, and we're enhancing that with landscaping, both at a pedestrian level and at a canopy level, and I think that helps to create that. I think the building is, it does a tremendous lot of help in creating that safety factor, just the fact that you have a building there and you don't have parking on both sides, or you don't have cars on both sides. So I think it's treated a little bit differently. The trees themselves, I think the canopy trees, you know, tend to provide traffic calming, so where people might be speeding there now, just the fact that you have the canopy of trees creates traffic calming in itself, and I think that will help, you know, at the sidewalk. So I don't think we need additional green space. As a matter of fact, I think that works against your guiding principles of moving the building towards the street. If you keep cheating on that, then you tend to not have that urban edge where you want it to be.
Well, I think part of what we're talking about, I understand your point about the guiding principles and kind of the urban, moving the buildings closer to the street. I think part of, in this area where the streets are so busy, we want to have the engagement of the building to the street and to the pedestrians and having that kind of feel, but at the same time, also making it a pleasant experience for the pedestrians. I think for, right now, it's difficult. When you walk along, 66 is very busy. France is very busy. York is very busy. So just having, being right on that very busy street is not really, I think, what we're looking at long-term for this area. And so to have some kind of, and some kind of vegetation or some kind of buffer that provides for more of a, when you're walking down the street, you're not literally right next to speeding cars. I understand what you're saying about the trees and the canopy, but I'm wondering if there isn't a provision to have some of that, again, on the traffic side as well. And I don't know that, you know, it appears, and I don't know if this is an issue for you from just the hotel itself, I mean, having the hotel itself that close to a busy street, I don't know if that causes concern for you folks in terms of whether folks want to stay in a room that's right on a busy street.
I don't think that's an issue. I think it's more a policy for you as to how you want to establish that edge, you know, whether you want to, you know, have the traffic edge and then landscaping, or just grass, or it's no storage, and then the sidewalk, or whether you want to actually have some landscaping in that outer edge. I think that's a, that's more of a city policy as to how you want to handle that. As far as the building is concerned, I think we have plenty of setback for the building now with the 10, with just the 10 feet. And that, by the way, the 10 feet is the minimum amount. We've got more along 66th Street, a greater setback there because the traffic is a little bit faster there, but we are, we are hoping that that canopy of trees will help slow that traffic down as it comes around that corner.
And just, I guess, just to, so I'm clear, in terms of the footprint of where you're putting the site, is there any flexibility to move everything a little further to the southwest?
I think on, I think the only part that that, that you might want to look at that, and we can look at it as well, would be on the York side, that wing, in other words, here. I think we can set that back a little bit more if you think that's appropriate, to get a little bit more setback in here.
And on the 66th side, that would be difficult because...
We already have quite a bit of setback in here.
Right. Well, I think, I think the question is, or Steve, I think the question is, or what he's asking, what I was going to ask, too, is, hey, you have the sidewalk there, but where's the buffer between the road and the sidewalk starts? And is that what you're getting at, too?
Yeah.
And so I'm not necessarily against moving the building back, but how are you buffering between the traffic and the sidewalk? That's, at least that's my question, anyway, for that.
Yeah. My primary question. How much latitude do you have to move everything?
That would take moving the existing sidewalk.
Yeah.
And so that would, that would mean moving it probably onto our property versus in the public right-of-way.
Right.
Yeah.
And that sidewalk was just installed this past summer by the city after we granted them the building.
Need to do that.
Awesome. Sorry. Well, and this is one other question. I mean, and typically with your hotels, do you then own and manage them long-term, or how does that typically work for you guys?
Well, we hired Noble Interstate, is a dedicated operations group that is part of Interstate Hotels Group, which is the largest domestic operator of hotels, and they operate our hotels for us. We own them, we develop them, we asset-manage them. We're very involved in the operations of our hotels, but we don't, the employees in the hotel are not our own employees.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments? Commissioner Forrest?
I share some of Commissioner Hobs' concerns about the sidewalk, and from both an aesthetic and a safety point of view. I like the idea of the trees and all of that, and I understand traffic calming principles. However, it's already, when you have that kind of a turn in the road with an island, it's, it can be, the trees and the proximity of the building to the road are going to lessen the driver's visibility of pedestrians that are trying to cross there. People sometimes whip around those kinds of corners, and that's one thing I would want to have highlighted in some way. This is, is this another county road? Okay. On both sides, right?
They're both county roads.
Okay. So that's something we'd want to look at with the county as far as how signage, whatever, that can alert drivers to pedestrians. The proximity, it does seem snug to me, because, yes, we want to bring our buildings up to the road, but not necessarily to be urban, because some of those old urban designs we found aren't that great for pedestrians. And, but it's to engage the pedestrians along the roadway, and as Commissioner Hobs said, to make it an inviting place for them. And that's another concern of mine, and I'm just throwing this out there as in, as part of this whole site plan philosophy, I mean, sketch plan philosophy, is the entrance on the corner there, the grand entrance, effectively is going to be kind of a false front. It's going to be usable, but it's not going to be used by the customers of the hotel so much. And that concerns me, because then, yeah, we've got a doorway there, but if it's not being used, it's not that kind of lively, engaging atmosphere. And also, it would be nice if there were some, I don't know what it would be, but it would be nice if there's some amenity or some reason for pedestrians to use that door other than to cross, to use a crosswalk that may or may not be there. It's, it ends up being just a big sign, pretty much, if it's not being used. The, when you say lead building to lead certification, that means both the building itself and the use of the building would be considered? In other words, the practices that go on in the building would be the lead-type practices for sustainability?
The lead, you say, in operations?
Yeah, that's all part of, if you, do you actually get the building certified and...
Yeah, we get the building certified, and Interstate, as well as Hilton, have, they have green operations practices. So recycling and proper use of chemicals, disposal, all of the green-type activities that you'd expect, we'd be doing as an operator.
That's good. And then, along with that, the landscaping in the back, I, I don't know what your plans are, but it would be something that will be interesting to look at when you come back. I have you consider, I know maybe there's some low shrubbery or grass or something, but between the parking lot of the hotel and the service road, to just kind of demarcate it. I'm just curious if, what your purposes are with that.
There is a, you know, you talked about the center element here, which is the lodge, where you see, you know, that's a, you can see through the building there to the front entrance. There are entrances and exits out here that go out onto this plaza. There's a plaza all the way around that lodge space that the residents or the guests of the hotel do use. So they will be going out there to use that space.
Isn't that 60 feet from the road? Or 60 feet from, Gary, the right-of-way, how far in does it go from the edge of the, from the road edge?
Right here. It's this line.
Oh, it's, okay, is that on?
It's about 30 to 40 feet in, right in front.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then it really extends out away, it's much narrower on the roadways, right?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I share Commissioner Hobs' point of view in that I would like to see it shifted back a little bit more to the interior of the property, but in order to provide some flexibility for pedestrian access and things like that, or pedestrian use. It's nice to have that we've, we just installed that sidewalk, but yet, on the other hand, it's kind of this utilitarian thing that I'm wondering how much is going to get used the way it is now, if it's not more inviting than that. I mean, right now, people can cross, cross the street and then cut diagonally over to the transit center, too. So that's, it's going to cut that off. Maybe, it might end up being a cut-through for everybody going to the bus from the other properties across the roads, who knows at that point? And those, I think, are my points. Thank you.
I've got kind of a little list to go through here, so. What's the height of the building, just for curious? Is it, is it four stories?
Four-story.
So that's 50-ish feet, or do you know offhand, just roughly?
I sent it to Gary, what was it, 53 feet, Gary? At the highest, I think at the highest point, which is that...
Four stories, that's, I was just curious. I didn't see that on there. So I just had a couple of comments, and I would kind of respectively disagree with some of my other commissioners here on the setback. I actually like how it's up towards the street more, and I think that is, would be enough setback there. I think because of the size of the site, it is more than it probably looks there, I think, along there. However, I would share, as kind of mentioned before, is there anything to get plantings between the sidewalk and the street? And I don't know that with, I didn't, fortunately, didn't get out there to look at it today, but that'd be one of my concerns on that. Back to the vegetation question, I think in the, I'd like to see more kind of that point, as Commissioner Forrest mentioned, on the breaking it up between the mall area and the hotel along that, the ring road there. And then also, there's some pretty large expanses of parking in there, anything to break that up, such as kind of just north of where your pointer is there, kind of through that area. You know, what can we, what can you do to, you know, put another strip through there or something, just to break that up from a vegetation standpoint? Where's your loading dock area? Is that all enclosed, or what are you doing with that?
We don't, the hotel doesn't need a loading dock.
Oh, okay. And it's because I, kind of to that other point, you know, we, obviously, as you can see here, we have four-sided architecture, right? So we don't want to see any utilities or all that stuff screened. There is no, there is no back door here, right? I'm sure you're well aware, but just wanted to reiterate that point. As far as the sidewalk, what I think, and I real, I'm sorry, were you, were you purchasing this or leasing this, or what was curious?
Simon is a partner with...
Partner, okay. Well, either way, we actually walked around a lot of this last summer, actually, last spring, and one thing that we couldn't easily do, and I'm sure no one else can, is actually walk to the west here from this site. So to me, if you're going to connect to a lot of it, which I, I like the concept of this in the area, I'm kind of surprised there hasn't been one earlier with the hospital there, but how could you actually walk to the hospital from here? And it's really tough to go across north on 66. I don't know if that's any better on the other end, but at the same time, it would seem like you'd want to be able to walk along the north side of the site to get there. Right now, there's no sidewalk along that side or disjointed areas. So there's a lot of pieces to go across in many areas that actually don't have a sidewalk. So I guess I'd like to see you speak to Simon, whoever, to see what we can do about that to get more pedestrian access that way as well. What are you doing for signing and wayfinding? Have you gone through that, or, you know, when we, when it comes back in, we'd like, or I'd like to see how you're proposing to get people in and out of here, whatever signs you're putting on here, you know, what the ordinances would go for that. You know, I always think it's very important to have that wayfinding, because people are going to have to come off the streets to get back in here, right? You don't have really direct access from, from the streets. Gary has a question for you. What school district is this? Is this in Richfield?
You know, I'm not entirely sure.
There was a, Commissioner Lee had a question about storm, and our civil engineers here, if you wanted Ben to come up and speak to your question.
I'll go check our school district map.
I was just curious. So those are, in general, my comments. And yeah, storm, but she had brought that up earlier, too.
My name is John Libby. I'm with Kimley Horn. It's located at 2550 University Avenue in St. Paul. Stormwater currently drains, surface drains across the parking lot to an existing catch basin and enters directly into the storm sewer. There's no treatment. And in the proposed condition, the requirement or fulfill watershed rules is to attenuate the rate and the volume. So the volume of water leaving the site would be reduced, and the rate at which it leaves the site would also be reduced. So in addition to those two requirements, the water would also be treated for phosphorus and for sediment. So sediment that's currently leaving the parking lot as is, enters directly into the storm sewer. By placing systems underground, then any sediment that's in that water is able to infiltrate, and essentially, all of that is removed from that first flush event, which is the first inch of rainfall that falls. So it would be a significant improvement by adhering to the watershed rules with the development that's proposed.
Can you talk about how that stormwater pond works, or is that what you're saying? That that's just going to percolate down and reach the structure underground?
The stormwater pond would function by, as the water enters into the pond, there's a permanent pool of storage. So the water that enters in, those particulates of sediment, have the time to settle to the bottom of the pond, and then over the course of five or 10 years, that sediment gets cleaned out. So it's a place where that sediment can fall out, whereas when it just enters directly into a storm sewer system, sediment is still churned up in the water. So then it just works its way through the system and all the way out to the receiving lake or river.
So it's really holding. You're not, you have no outlet for that? That's just really just going to sit there and percolate?
There would be an outlet.
There is.
And so the way it's designed is that it handles a smaller event, which is where most of those particulates are. So in that first inch of rainfall, typically, all of those sediments that are in the parking lot, they enter into the system, they get flushed right out, and then in your larger events, that's already happened. And so those larger events can bypass after the pond fills up and enter into, through the same waterfall that's currently gaseous. that's currently gazed today.
Okay. All right, thank you. I, oh.
Just to follow up on the stormwater stuff. So, are you talking about all the runoff from the parking lot itself is going to this, this pond that you've depicting on here? Is that, is there any treatment in the parking lot itself?
There would need to be underground detention as well.
Okay.
Infiltration. The site at the southeast corner, One Southdale Place, has a combination of rain gardens and underground infiltration. So, likely, the pond that's sized here would not be adequate for the entire development. And so, we're planning on having some underground detention as well.
Okay. And for the building itself, come on the north side, is that the same thing, that there'd be some treatment?
On the north side of the building?
Yeah. I mean, where's, how, where's, any, anything that's coming in from the building itself, or those impermeable surfaces, how is that being treated?
So, the building itself, the roof leaders would be connected to the storm sewer system on-site, and then that would be conveyed to the same treatment facilities, so the underground infiltration detention systems and the pond.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so, to be clear, you are going to install a system that actually intercepts the water before it dumps into the stormwater system?
Yes.
Okay. Because I have a particular interest in that, because I live off of Lake Cornelia, and it's always been my understanding that Lake Cornelia is the big holding tank for all of Southdale, or a majority of it, and we are seeing so much sediment go into that. So, what you will do will actually alleviate some of that, like I said, the first pass, a lot of the chemicals and some of the sediment.
Correct.
For that site, which we don't currently have now.
Right. So, currently, zero percent of the sediment is removed. After the development, about seventy percent will be removed. So, it is a significant improvement.
Okay. Well, I would like to see whatever can be done as far as managing the stormwater on that site. Obviously, you understand that that's the direction that more and more communities have to take, because our stormwater systems are just overloaded, and now we're putting more, more people on it, more building, more hardscape. I understand, in this case, we're actually gaining more green space, that's a good thing, but it's all, it's nice to look at, but it should serve a function as well. That means literally, in terms of square footage, amount of permeable area that can absorb the water to allow it to percolate down versus just sloughing off onto a hard surface.
Right.
I believe this site is a hundred percent hardscape right now, so.
Yeah, I understand that anything would be better, but I'm saying that's, this is the opportunity to alleviate that problem, because we're in a situation.
I'm just pointing that out, that we're actually going to hopefully be ahead of you overall in that, too.
Absolutely. Yep. Okay, so, I have other questions, or, all right, so let me just get through this. All right, first impression, first of all, I just, I want to say thank you very much to Mr. Grass for making that very, well, just offering up the fact that the reason we went with this particular, is it Homewood Suites, is because we can weigh in on some of the finishes and how we want it to appear. With that, having said that, I think one of the things we're trying to do here in this whole Southdale, looking at Southdale, is to really identify what makes Edina, what makes Southdale. And I will have to be honest, that my first view of the exterior does not lead me to believe that there's anything different that makes this building an Edina building. I feel like I could see it in St. Louis Park, I could see it in Minneapolis, I could go see it in Bloomington. So, I understand that the limestone, everybody says limestone is very popular, but it's popular in a lot of communities. So, my challenge would be, I think you have an excellent architect here, is to allow them to really explore, in the form of the building, a way to break it down a little more. You've already got sort of this tripartite shape. It still reads as one monolithic structure, and I think that's some of the problem that I'm having to deal with in terms of understanding how the landscape relates and what's that experience to a pedestrian. Without some more movement in and out of that front or the sidewalk, it's just going to be yet another structure. It feels that way, on that corner. I'm reluctant to let that real estate go in some ways, because what we have now is sort of this suburban openness. It might be a little too open by today's standards, but it is a good quality, especially at the corners, when you can see over a little bit of green and see a building setback a little bit. And I think that's what we're sensing here, is that's, that's such an important intersection, and to pull it that close up, I think that in some ways, you're shortchanging yourself by not exploring that opportunity to just give a little more right at that little cusp, that node, and do something with it. So, maybe it means taking that center portion and just dislodging it a bit and shifting it back. Does it all have to be interconnected in that way? And maybe there's, that would start to bring a scale to it that feels actually like a little town center versus so much of just being a hotel. So, that was my, my first impression about the building itself. I do appreciate the fact that it's Suites, and I think that there is a need for a hotel in this area for that type of purpose. We've not had, really, other than the Westin, any hotel options within Edina. So, that, the use seems to make sense. I'm interested in the pedestrian connections of the Grass Boulevard. I would like to see more of a pedestrian-eye view of that. It's hard to read on this plan, is that very wide? Is it just a sidewalk with a few trees? It could be very nice. We have a very nice pedestrian bike link right now behind Target, and I'm sure you're aware of that, which kind of meanders in certain places, other places it's very straight. If that's what we're talking about, that could be very nice, but I, it's hard for me to understand that. So, it would be great to have more information on that and really think about what is that that we're trying to connect, because you could set the tone for everything else that happens. Just as much as you're looking at One Southdale and saying, "We'd like to acknowledge that," or "The Mall," you can improve upon that by setting it in even another direction, because there's really not much to work with in some ways, when you think about it. I mean, as designers, we're always looking for constraints, because it makes our designs that much better when we, when we have this and that to contend with. And sometimes, just a blank piece of paper's not that great. And I feel that way sometimes about some of these parcels here that are parking lots, blank parcel. So, be choosy about what you choose to relate to, but also use it as an opportunity to really get something great going here, and I think then we could really, really support it in terms of the variances that you need. This give-to-get is a serious thing. It really is. I mean, I think that, especially now we're talking Southdale, everyone's watching what's going to happen. It, this is, you are setting the vocabulary for this area, so it's very critical. My overall sense is there needs to be much more intensive landscaping. Take a look at that, what that means. It's not just trees and some grass and some shrubs. What is it, actually? What is happening at that main entrance there? That could be very nice, it could be more than just a false front. It really could. And potentially, even that little triangular piece out in, you know, out in the middle of the intersection could become something. So, all these are open and up for grabs. Steve questioned the amount of green buffer at the sidewalk. I'm feeling the same thing, just a little too tied up to it, and there's nothing magical about where that sidewalk is now, recently paved or not. Show us something that's even better, and I think we'd all jump on board with you. The stormwater, I personally have no issues with having that pond there, I love the idea. So, I think that it could be something, again, another opportunity, something that could really spark something and identify that corner in that hotel. So, all the more, if you can use that and integrate that and make that a part, a central piece of the stormwater management, and beautiful to look at, I think, again, that'd be a real plus for, for this project.
Anyone else? Commissioner Nemiroth?
Thank you, Evan, for the, we were just playing rock, paper, scissors, but who's going to go first, so sorry about that. I liked the presentation, I thought it was a good presentation, I think it's a good building, and thank you for bringing it forward. I particularly wish to call out, I really like the pictures that you showed of the other places to show, these are examples of what it could look like. So, thank you. I will differ from some of my commissioners about the false front idea. I don't think that will be a false front. I think it's a false front. That implies it won't be used, and I think it won't, you know, whether it's used or not, it will determine, be dependent upon what opportunities are there, there are to walk to places to the east or to the north of the property. And I think there are places that people are going to want to walk to today, and hopefully, there are more coming in the future about that. For example, if someone's staying at a Suites Hotel, they may wish to walk to a grocery store. And I stayed at a hotel just like this, you know, about a year ago, and my family found an entrance. It wasn't even a, to get to a walk, so we didn't have to walk through the sidewalk, I mean, walk through the parking lot to get where we were going. So, I think that pedestrians will use that if they want to go, say, to the, walk to the grocery store. A couple of comments, and I have a couple of, one small comment, a couple of maybe different questions. One is, I would, I don't know if I, I still have the focus on the sidewalk, I wish the sidewalk were a little bigger. I don't, I probably would even trade myself, some of the trees, for a little bigger sidewalks. I think that will be a valued thing in the future. That's just my comment. Then I had two questions, and one is, it's great that Ben from Southdale's here, and this question's probably for you, Ben, as much as it is for anyone else, is, one thing we haven't spoken about tonight was the parking variance. And so, my question probably would be, you know, Southdale's most affected by the parking variance, what are your thoughts about that?
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate you having me here today. And Ben Martin, Mall Manager, Southdale Center, Ten Southdale Center. Anecdotally, I went up on top of One Southdale Place this holiday season, on the Saturday before Christmas. I wanted to answer that very question to get a sense of how we'd be affected by this. This lot was really not used on that day. So, from that perspective, on our busiest day of the year, there weren't any customers parking there. I really feel good about the parking situation from that perspective. So...
That's fine, thank you. And then I have one kind of more conceptual question, more for the developers, and that is, I think this is great, I think it's a great idea, I think it's great you're putting hotel in here. The one question I had is just, I mean, it's kind of a bigger question than anything we talked about, is that, is the corner, why the corner? Like, for example, if I look at the map on Southdale, maybe the corner was the best parcel you guys had available, but I'm wondering why you wouldn't put the hotel further to the west, farther to the west, I guess would be proper language use of the word, but farther to the west, closer to the, closer to the hospital? Because I would think that that would be, that you may, that may be a source of customers for you, and if you had, you know, we talked about walking, and if you, you know, there's an open, there's a large parking lot to the west, and so I'm wondering why you chose this corner instead of farther west?
Sure. We did consider further to the west, and that was actually what we looked at initially. It just ultimately didn't work out with our responsibilities to our other tenants and seeking their approvals and necessary things.
Macy's has a view corridor there.
Yeah. Because we do, certainly, we want to have that synergy with the hospital, and we feel that just based on what we can do with our existing tenants, this is the closest that we can get it.
Because, because like, just thinking, I mean, and this isn't my original idea, but boy, it would be cool if you had a Skyway from the hospital to a hotel to Southdale, and that, if the hotel right in the middle, that would be so cool for all of you.
I definitely agree.
But this is the best you can do?
It is, yes.
All right, thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olson?
Just a couple of quick ones, not you, Brad. You can sit down. Just real quickly, I know that we're, this is a quick one for you, Carrie, is the traffic engineer going to be looking at that one-way to two-way conversion?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, if they come back with that study, and they say that, you know, changing it, switching it to two-way won't work, will cause too many traffic problems, is that an issue with access to your site, whoever wants to answer that?
Well, it's not our desired outcome. So, yeah, obviously, it creates a situation where people leaving the hotel can go either way, but people coming down and coming in the entrance, that entrance would have to go to the mall and come back around and come back up to get into the parking that's nearest the hotel. So, it would be, it'd be more inconvenient for us. Yes, is it a deal killer, or no? So, hopefully, it'll work out.
Okay. And then another question, just maybe for the engineer. With the stormwater pond, is there going to be water in there?
Actually, first to add to Kevin's comment. I wanted to clarify, currently, the access is two-way for a portion of this ring road.
Okay.
And that, that two-way stops here. So, the request is to convert this portion into two-way, which will allow access out the door. In terms of stormwater management, most likely, this pond would have four feet of permanent depth water.
Okay.
But that wouldn't necessarily have to be the case. It seems that the desire would be to have sandy water that's clean, potentially with a fountain.
Right.
And I think that's, that's too low.
Okay. And then with the staff comment about maybe doing all underground, is that a potential to, or is the city, okay. And if that's the case, then, and I'm switching around, but would, then, could you convert that to kind of public green space and make it into more of a, if it's not a pond? Architect, landscape architect. I guess I just want to say, if it goes under, the stormwater is underground, I want that to still be, remain as green space and landscaped area that could actually be used, maybe seating and such. Okay? And then I also agree that we need more landscaping along the perimeter and, perimeter of the parking lot and along the perimeter of the site. Thanks.
I would put in a nod for the pond, though. I don't think I mentioned that before, but prefer the pond versus the, having it all underground, if that works, too.
I guess not just a mud pit.
They're going to put a fountain there, you said.
Pardon?
Said they're going to put a fountain there, right?
Okay.
Potential.
You're out of here. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
A question about the brand. When I first read the proposal, I wasn't terribly excited about the brand. I'm still not terribly excited about the brand. I know that's kind of a minor consideration, but also understanding how branding and these element, in this situation works, it does, you know, have some effects on the exterior and what you're permitted to do. What, what are the trade-offs in, if you were to go with maybe a Residence Inn or kind of a, you know, a different brand, what that would mean for the exterior?
Well, with the exterior, it'd have less freedom with some of the other branded elements, especially Residence Inn. You know, we could work with the brand and get some modifications, but they like, they're pushing their prototypes hard. Marriott has always been more consistent with their properties and their select service, and trying to be, you know, to meet their business traveler expectations is what they're, when they see it, they recognize it as a Residence Inn, and, you know, when they walk in the front door, it looks like a Residence Inn. The room, it's expectations. Whereas, I, we haven't, I don't think we've shown these, but these, these are, these are Homewood Suites interiors that I'm showing on the screen now, and these are completely different color schemes and fabrics and lighting, and it's, it's anything we want it to be. These, these are all Homewood Suites, public spaces. Those are four different hotels, all Homewood Suites, four completely different interior designs. You can see that the latitude that we have. Again, this one on the top is obviously the same hotel, but those are two different spaces, and the one on the bottom is the same hotel. That's our Tucson Homewood Suites on the bottom. So, you, you just don't have, if you look at these designs, you don't have that latitude with the Residence Inn. You're going to have their prototypical front desk, you're going to have their, you're going to have each one of their elements that they require, and you can put it in a different spot, maybe, but, but you're going to have it, and it's going to look like all the rest of them.
Any other questions? Commissioner Forrest?
I remembered my question, or kind of concern, I guess, is what I would use. I like the idea of having, you know, the connection with the outdoor patios and things like that, but my one concern would be, again, partly, it has to do with proximity to the street or, and/or to the sidewalk, would be the privacy element, and it's kind of like the W downtown, the bathrooms are on the exterior of the... And, um, uh, it's kind of like, the W downtown, the bathrooms are on the exterior of the, uh, building, and they are not one-way glass. And you can get quite a show. So, um, as, even as a guest in a hotel, I like to feel my privacy is my privacy, but yet I love light. So that's one thing. And then, um, I'd say when you come back again, look at, have a really good, um, way of explaining the traffic flow changes, whatever they may be. And I agree that it'd be nice to have, um, really garden-like landscaping that's attractive and that will then also draw people into your plaza, which is street-side and things like that. The other, um, point I was going to make is, because this is, um, I mean, there's another new building going up there, and we're talking about apartment buildings and all these other things, and business, other businesses around there. It would just be nice to, uh, keep in mind, when this is going, and the adaptability for another use down the road, if need be. Say, 20, 30 years ago, instead of ripping that thing down, can it be adapted for offices? Can it be adapted for, uh, permanent living spaces or, or things like that? And, um, it's just, we have had so many of, a number of buildings in this whole Southdale area that have been outdated and torn down, and they build something new. And I think probably by using the lead standards, you might be heading a little bit more in that direction. But, um, yeah, I'd landscape the heck out of it. It's going to be a big anniversary of Southdale next year, right? So be nice to have a, um, to keep in mind that this is, this is a, it's a landmark. It's a huge landmark. It's a, it was, made the Channel Two, whatever, top 10 architectural things in America. So let's, uh, let's celebrate it by keeping really high standards. So.
Anything else? All right, well, thanks for, thanks for coming in. Do you have any comments for us?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Like I said, I, I think, you know, I think you heard general support for it. Personally, I think it'd be a great, you know, a hotel in that area, as needed, and it would be well-used. But I think you heard some other comments on, uh, from what folks were thinking up here. So hopefully, you take that and, along with your comments from City Council, and, uh, look forward to your proposal coming back here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is correspondence and partitions. I don't think we have any of those. Chair and member comments. I would just say, welcome back from last year. Any other, uh, member comments? I'm assuming we can get a little update on Southdale here. Study when we, whenever you want.
Well, I guess, I can just take a crack. I mean, just let people know that, um, you know, we're, we're kind of moving to the next phase with the Southdale Work Group. I mean, it's, we have, uh, the, the sketch plans and the designs that we've done, um, that I think have been well-received, presented to you here at the Planning Commission, to the City Council. So the next step is really to, to try to look at those and try to, uh, really make it a little more tangible about how we can implement that vision, and then start doing some outreach as well, and get some feedback. Um, so that's kind of the next phase for us, that we're going to be starting here shortly.
Anything to add? No? Great. Thanks for everyone's time on that. A lot of time. Commissioner Lee?
I wanted to just, uh, update and, and get a little feedback on, uh, our work plan. I mentioned, I think, last year, that, uh, we had that initiative on our 2016 work plan. It's called Monitoring Residential Redevelopment Standards and Ordinances. And, uh, over, oh, tail end of last year, I believe, Commissioner Forrest, myself, I think you as well, and others have, um, been following up on some of the residential, uh, issues that go along with the teardowns. Obviously, uh, years prior to my coming on the commission, there was a small subcommittee of this group that looked at some of the issues, which resulted in the residential redevelopment coordinator position. So looking at this particular work item, it, it seems to me it could be fleshed out a little bit. So, um, last year, there was, uh, probably two major things that came out as a result of that. And one was that teardowns and housing expenses was still the number one issue facing the city, based on the resident survey. So we know that we're in for, uh, not a decrease, but still more teardowns. And so any issues that have evolved as a result of that, impacting neighboring properties or noise, or any number of things, will continue to happen. Um, our mayor and our council also worked very hard at, uh, obviously, the point is to try to make a diner a better place to live, and we all stand behind that. So with that, I sort of see that as the mission of that particular item on our work plan. So, going forward, um, I'd like to offer up a short list of items for potential further study by our planning commission. So, uh, how that would work is maybe a small work group of myself, Commissioner Forrest, before she departs, uh-
One more meeting?
We'll probably-
Maybe two more.
Have some, um, some input. But I would also be looking for anyone else who has sort of a, an interest in this, the residential redevelopment, uh, some of the homes that, and all the things that sort of come before us and all that entails. So in trying to distill down some of the issues that we faced last year, um, here are some of the items, and I'm just throwing it out there. And then what I'd like to do is, if we have support for this, that come back with some document that I could bring forth with the commission, uh, for the plan, our next planning commission meeting, so that we could kind of flesh out that work item. So, the first one is to understand, uh, as a planning commissioner, the role of the various city regulatory departments and how they interact in this building permit process. I think when we are asked to sort of weigh in on certain variance requests, we are making assumptions about how that actually, from our place, where does that go from here, and how does it actually get, um, followed up on? And we also are aware that there are particular cases where, in some cases, that process, it may or may not work as smoothly. So I think it would impact us as an understanding of how difficult we're actually making it for city staff, when we put conditions on, on some of our, um, our reviews. So the first item, I, again, I'm saying is just kind of just understand that role, and what that might mean is really just sitting down with some people on the city side, from the different departments, and identifying some, uh, options for proactively addressing any potential issues, or just at least understand where the issues are likely to pose problems. Um, and the second item would be to understand the role and limitations of the residential redevelopment coordinator position. At this point in time, um, looking back on it, I believe that position was created to address a lot of those issues, but, again, one person, um, with limited time, I'm sure there are many, many, uh, items that probably don't get the full follow-up that, uh, often you'd like to see. So I think in this point, we would be looking at, where are issues likely to pose problems in the follow-up, um, for the coordinator, potentially due to time constraints? Or we may choose to make some recommendations to proactively record and track and verify potential issues. A third item would be to look at the adoption of some standards relating to the total amount of impervious surface in addition or in lieu of building lot coverage. And that one should sound very familiar. We've had so many discussions where really all we had to go on was building lot coverage, but yet we all had a sense that there was, um, potentially another way to approach the issue, if we had some leverage in terms of impervious surface, measuring that. So I'd like to take a look at that as a potential item, as part of the residential redevelopment. A fourth item could be to maintain and publicize a residential redevelopment contractor scorecard or list, for the purpose of having residents to be able to, um, who are interested in working with a contractor in the future. I understand that the city can't actually make recommendations of contractors, but we certainly could post or collect or gather or make public the data of the contractors that are, um, complying with our regulations and have had a good, successful outcome. And I know as a homeowner, if I were going to be doing any future work, I would, the first thing I would want is to, uh, go to them, uh, those types of contractors. So, uh, that kind of information, I think our residents could really benefit by, if we would take some responsibility towards, uh, putting that information out there and collecting it. Um, and the last item was to, uh, for me, it is, it's, it's important that, I think, every piece of communication we receive, whether someone comes to the podium to speak, or, uh, an email we're copied on in our packet, as part of a greater group, a wider group, the City Council, or sometimes it's specifically to the Planning Commission, that we have some way of tracking all correspondence received, track the follow-up response, and close it out. I mean, it's, sometimes it's as simple as just assigning a number to it, and then, in, as in any other meeting, you just look at old business and new business. But it would be very helpful, I think, and also, I think residents would appreciate that, knowing that they were heard, and it wasn't just something that they think got distributed, but then we never acknowledged or, uh, did anything with it. And many times, there's not much that can be done, and I think a lot of residents, in fact, submit, um, letters or comments, not particularly looking for any kind of reaction, but they do, do want to be sure that that's part of the record. And so on our particular, for us as commissioners, I would like to have a better idea or handle on that fact that something was done about that. So, uh, again, it's sort of a system, uh, just a, a log of, of, of the correspondence that is received. So it's basically those five items at this time, and, uh, if there were other ones, anyone else on the commission would obviously be able to open it up. But these are all in relation to, uh, residential construction.
Carrie, just a, kind of a bookkeeping comment. Would we have to, you know, the work plan has been given to council, would we have to do a go-back with that?
I think it would. Yes, I think these are items that are going a little bit beyond what we had intended on that residential redevelopment follow-up, and, um, I think we'd want to be more clear on where we're going with these five items. So I think it would require an amendment to our work plan for next year.
Okay. So that would be something, potentially go to council to, just to give an update and any comments they have, right? Okay. I would just, from, yeah, because, you know, we're, just, like I said, we've gone through it now, and, and, doesn't mean we can't change it, of course, but just how would we formalize it? And at the same time, if you're looking at things like that, you, you'd want to obviously have, A, their knowledge that you are, and B, uh, their support on those things, or what, you know, to make a change that, that would be, you know, an item that they would be interested in also.
Yeah. And, um, you and I had a conversation, too, as we know that, you know, with the comp plan, um, review, um, that obviously, time is a factor, and we all have very limited time. So I'm not saying that all five of those items need to be looked at, I'm just throwing some items out there. We might want to, we will have to prioritize, it may end up being only one or two or three of those items, but, um, I thought I would just summarize what came out of sort of our follow-up from last year, of, of looking at some of the projects, and, and those seem to sort of coalesce around these, these five things. So, um, I would be open to, um, you know, crafting something, or help craft something so that we get it in writing, and I could come back, uh, at our next meeting and have something. But I would like input from, um, everyone else, so.
Any comments, volunteers?
Uh, I think, I think that this is a wonderful set of ideas that you have, and I, I really would appreciate something in writing. When you do that, could you also work with staff, some of, because, like, some of the things, as you were describing, and I was going through my mind, I was like, well, is this a planning commission activity, or is this a staff activity? And if it was a little clearer how that would get divided, that would help me.
Yep. If I, some of the, some of those initial, the process, I'm not sure if that is a planning commission. Um, you know, how we process the permits and those kind of things, I'm not sure if that's, you know, part of your charge. Um, but I can mention the number three in regard to the impervious surface. That is, remember, it was on our 2015 work plan, we're going to have engineering come back with the grading and drainage ordinance? And they're, they're looking at that, the whole city code, and that's going to be a piece of it. We weren't able to complete that 2015, and we want to do that here first quarter, at the latest, I'm hoping. But that is going to be an element of that. So I think that, that's one that, that we are going to address here in the first half of the year, um, as part of that grading and drainage.
Carrie, to that, I was going to ask you about that, too. And to that point, uh, I guess I'm just throwing this out there, but it'd be nice to have a couple of people from planning, for example, potentially, you know, reviewing that also as it goes along and understanding it. And granted, they're not necessarily the technical, technical expertise, but just from a broader standpoint, and, and what does it do, and, and what's the intent, and, you know, how does it, what does it do for the community, right? So, you know, what, what are the issues, you know, the things we've seen with stormwater, is it, is it getting at those, and is it, is that the intent, and how is that coming together? So, you know, to that point, you know, not, not that Commissioner Lee, but maybe that's something that would have also fairly broad impact, even, uh, work with the city on that and review those things also. So just a thought on that.
Yeah, certainly. Ross Bittner, who you're familiar with, um, is kind of heading that up. And part of his charge also deals with the residential redevelopment. You recall last spring, we visited Chicago and got some tips and pointers on how they deal with some of their residential redevelopment, um, projects on an ongoing basis. So there are things that we learned from that trip that are going into this ordinance, construction fencing around projects.
I was going to say, I hope you're putting a fence around things.
Yes. So that's, I apologize that we didn't get that down.
I've been meaning to call and promote that, but I haven't got around to it, so I'll do it here.
Yes, it's, it's, we are planning on making that proposal, and we've been, we've been informing builders that that's coming as well, so it's not going to be a surprise, but, um, so that, that kind of goes on with the residential redevelopment issues.
Yes, I guess my overall point is, you know, there may be, there may be some things like that, that both tag onto and, and help guide also.
Yes.
That I think that, that is a huge one, you know, that is a very huge one, and what it's doing and what it's, because of all the things we've seen with stormwater, right? So, for example.
Yeah, why don't I get an update just on where we're at, storm engineering, and-
Yeah, I was meaning to ask you about that, because it kind of-
Report back.
Talked about fourth quarter last year, and-
Yes.
And we didn't have a meeting for a while, and dropped off, and wanted to reconnect on that one. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in all that. Any other comments for Commissioner Forrest?
Uh, when Commissioner, Commissioner Lee and I were talking about this on a broad level, one of the things that, um, interested me, based upon just my experience over time and with the changes in our ordinances as well, is, and I think when Commissioner Lee was talking about process, it's, it would be useful for us, and this isn't so much a big planning commission project, it's just something maybe whoever wants to be involved could help with, coming up, maybe interviewing different city staff from the different departments that are, uh, involved with any project like this, with redevelopment projects, and finding out from them what role they play on a general basis, what, um, what would be most useful for us to be looking at on their behalf when things come to us, what kinds of things should we be alert for? And also, one thing, because we get asked this a lot, is what's the enforcement? Who's supposed to catch that? And just, I think if that information is out there for us, for the public, and also for the other departments, I mean, maybe some information would come out of such, out of the research that say, you know, there's a little bit of a gap here, how can we address this? I mean, it could be useful for the city as well. So I, for me, it's, it's kind, it would be enlightening to know, um, it's kind of hard and fast. It's not a, it may not be a decision-making part, you know, responsibility of the planning commission, but it's something that we're referring to when we have our deliberations on a project, because, um, you know, and also might help us set goals as a city for what do we want to see in our housing? We talk about affordability, we talk about appearance, we talk about all these different, different things that get floating around, and, um, it may be work toward a more comprehensive set of information, but it would be nice to just kind of start out, for me, anyway. I would like to start out with, um, just kind of finding out from the different city departments, you know, what they do, what the challenges are and all that. Yeah, Carrie?
Yeah. Could I, could I respond to that? I think that's a great idea. And, you know, as we have Cindy come in and give an update and how things are going, maybe for this year, and it could either, it could be a work session setting, or we could do it here as part of our regular agenda. In addition to having Cindy come in and talk about her processes that she goes through, we could have the building- about her processes that she goes through, we could have the building official, Dave Fisher, who, you know, kind of in charge of the overall process from the building side of it, and we could take you through an example, you know, how the process works, from the time you issue a variance to the time that a building permit's issued during construction, some of the things we can and can't do, and go through that entire process. That might be a good, good start.
Yes, so maybe there's pieces of this, yeah, pieces of this that...
And I'd like to see some metrics. I'd like to see, I would like for Cindy Larson to provide some counts and numbers and lists for us as far as what types of problems are, is she seeing, what percentage of the calls are for this, have the call levels gone up, gone down?
And she does that. You remember those charts that she shows?
She had those charts that came in for that. She logged, she tracks that mine.
Well, she tries the numbers, but it seemed like there was, there, but there was, there wasn't much detail. When she left, I still had a lot of questions, because it was just kind of, it was very high-level. And so it'd be nice to have something that's a little bit more...
What specifically are you looking for?
Well, I'm trying to recall the charts thing. I just know that I felt a little bit unsatisfied as far as there was, you know, oh, we got this many calls or whatever, but then when I'd ask about specific numbers, or what percentage roughly are calls regarding this or that, or what are your top five, and how do they break out, that kind of thing. Be nice to just have things topical and just a little more detail from, because I'm sure her job has morphed some over time, as well as, as the community and the builders get educated and everything. So it'd be nice to see how it's changed as well from two years ago.
Maybe it's more of a work session setting where there can be more give and take.
Is that enough for you to...
Carrie, is some of this information available on the Edina website that people could look, and then maybe we could have a, I think a work session might be a good idea, but then if it's available on, I think if it's available on the website, we could check that out beforehand and come in with a little bit more detail, instead of having her give us just a very basic explanation of what she's doing.
Yeah, I don't recall if we posted her presentation on the website. It would still be on our website, the archive of that meeting.
Not necessarily her presentation, but more like the data, some of this data about her job. Is that available on the website?
In terms of the number of calls and all of that, that's not.
That's not, okay.
I can tell you just intuitively, we don't receive the number of complaints that we did prior to her starting with the city. So that is certainly a good thing.
Any other comments to that? Carrie, I did just have another comment, and we kind of talked about the end of the year, but I don't know if we need to connect, or did you ever, did you ever find anything on the comp plan run-up or organization the last time through? Was there anything, items on that?
Yes. We've been putting together, and I was gonna try to get it on for tonight to have the discussion, but we're putting together an outline, process, everything that needs to be included in the comprehensive plan, what we're thinking. I thought I would touch base with you prior to presenting it to the entire commission, but we're, I'm getting much closer than we were last time we talked.
Okay. Just wanted to hit that again.
Yeah, we've, we've gotta get that started.
Right. Any other comments?
Well, just on my thing, I, what I think I'll do is just round back with Carrie in, on those items, 'cause there's some things here that sounds like, you know, if you've gotten the works.
Sounds like maybe one or two might go this direction, one or two that direction.
Exactly. And maybe what that amended work item will look like. So I'll come back with something at the next meeting and just say, looks like possibly these two. So if you, the rest of commissioners, if you have any other comments or thoughts on that, feel free to email me or call me.
Any other comments? Any staff comments, Carrie?
Just a couple brief things. The Gateway Point project, you recall, I think that was on our last agenda a couple of months ago, but the City Council did approve that, and that was submitted to the Met Council for review. They'll make a decision on it, I believe, next month. So that project may happen in 2016. I think that's the only update from council items from our past agendas.
Do you know when, what's this one across, or right to the south of that WIC site, drawing a blank on the name right now, when is that scheduled to open, do you know?
Oh, so they just, they've
Lenar, yes.
Yeah, they've just started construction. That's, we're probably another year away on that one.
And have you seen anything on the Southdale Library site?
Not as of yet, no. Haven't, haven't heard anything there.
Okay. I just, curiosity for...
But I would anticipate 2016's gonna be a lot busier than 2015 went out.
Kind of died off, didn't it?
There's a lot of things on the horizon.
It's busy for the holidays. Okay. With that, if there's anything else, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. See you in two.